Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight in person on Boston City TV and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the September 11th meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Capveriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. I'm pleased to welcome our new student representative to the school committee, Omer Ishmael. Omer is a senior at the John D. O'Brien School of Math and Science. He is active in Boston Student at Vibesary Council and is also enrolled in college classes at Wentworth Institute of Technology and with plans to pursue engineering. He looks forward to advocating for changes in BPS policy that is beneficial to his fellow students. Welcome, Omer. We're delighted to have you with us. Would you like to say a few words?
So. As the chair mentioned, my name is Omer Ishmael. I am a current senior at the John D. O'Brien School of Math and Science and a first-generation immigrant from Sudan. A little bit about me is that I enjoy riding bikes, tinkering with projects, especially in robotics, and spending time with my family. For the last three summers, I've spent my time at the Crimson Summer Academy at Harvard University, where I engaged with other high school scholars and took pre-college and college courses while living on campus. My love for math and technology is how I have gained my passion for engineering, which I plan to pursue in the future. I look forward to using my position to ensure that student voices and opinions are heard and valued. I'd also like to speak for one of the projects that we have at BSAC. So during the summer, we led a six-week summer leadership program, and one of the projects they worked on was a youth-led mural in Ubin Square. We wanted to invite the committee members and the community to join us for the unveiling of the mural on Tuesday, September 4th, at from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. The event will begin here in the school committee room, where students will present on the mural, and then we will go out to view the mural. Please reach out to Denise at Drory@BostonPublicSchools.org with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. We'll begin the meeting with the approval of minutes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 28, 2024, school committee meeting. Is there a motion?
Some more.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none of the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair Robinson. Good evening to the audience, both in school committee chambers and at home. I'd like to begin with Omer to say hello and welcome. We're so happy to have student voice, and I know you're going to do a great job representing BSAC. And as a member of BSAC, you play such a vital role in making sure student voice and advocacy is part of the district and that we're hearing, both at the committee and in the district, what is of concern and interest to students. So, welcome. So, a little bit about our first day. On Thursday, September 5th, and this past Monday, September 9th, we welcomed our brilliant students back to our classrooms. Both days were filled with joy, hope, and excitement. First, I want to acknowledge the many, many BPS staff that helped make our first few days successful. Thank you to our school leaders, our educators, parrots, custodians, cafeteria staff, social workers, guidance counselors, bus drivers and monitors, school nurses, and so many others for making sure that we were ready on day one. And thank you to our BPS families for sending your children to BPS. We look forward to partnering with you every day and entirely this year. I kicked off the first day at the Joseph Lee K-8 School in Dorchester with Mayor Wu and Chair Robinson. We greeted students, families, and staff as they arrived at school, and we participated in the longtime Boston tradition of handing out pencils, although we wondered if at some point it will be computers. I also visited the Margarita Menise Academy in Jamaica Plain, the Sumner Elementary School Upper Campus in Roslendale, and the Josiah Quincy Upper School in Chinatown. On Friday, I visited Tech Boston and Excel High Schools, and on Monday morning, I greeted students at the Hale Elementary School. Chair Robinson joined me at the Hale, where she began her own educational journey as a kindergartner 70 years before. It was very special to be there with her when she visited her classroom and welcomed the newest group of kindergarten students to the BPS. I also want to thank Boston Teachers Union President Eric Berg for joining us and the many Boston City councilors and state-elected officials who really spread out across the district to celebrate the first days of school in support of our students and families. First few days, when I think back, my images are just many smiles, many hugs, positive energy and hope throughout our schools, and it just reaffirmed that we're just going to have an amazing year. Students from the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing also returned to school this year in a beautiful, newly updated space in Charleston in the former Edwards Middle School building. The renovations are based on intentional design rooted in deaf space principles to best support the Horace Mann School community. The HMS team provided a warm welcome to the students and to their families. The Edwards Building is also the new location for six K-0 and K-1 classrooms for the Warren Prescott K-8 School. The Warren Prescott Lower School Campus also celebrated the opening of the new playground space. On Friday, September 6th, we celebrated the 25th Annual Citywide Kindergarten Celebration at the Boston Children's Museum. More than 380 of our youngest learners and more than 630 of their family members joined them at the event. Participants visited exhibits, received backpacks, and had an opportunity to meet district staff and ask questions. Countdown to kindergarten director, Josette Williams, and her team did an amazing job, as always, welcoming our youngest learners and their families to BPS. As of late yesterday, just a few updates on enrollment and registrations. As of late yesterday, enrollment was at 50,173, which includes 2,837 new registrations or 486 since the last school committee meeting on August 28th. During the weeks of August 26th and September 2nd, in just nine business days, BPS registered 730 students, or an average of 81 students per day. And I will just add that this is really an unprecedented number of students. This is much greater flow at this time of year than we typically see, and so it's very positive, reaffirming. We're thrilled to be able to invite so many students into our schools, and it is coming at a very fast pace. Even today, the welcome centers were extremely busy throughout the district, especially with lots of address and transfer changes, and all of those keep us quite busy, and they do have some bearing on transportation. We continue to work through our waitlists and have called more than 1,100 students. Waitlist calls and emails continue to go out twice a week as seats become available. And for the public, we will continue to call students off the waitlist as seats become available until the waitlist expires on November 30th for grades 1 through 12 and January 31st for K-0, K-2. In terms of attendance, looking at our student attendance as of noon today, still early in the school year, but we're already excited about the first five days and the positive attendance we've seen. Today, we averaged 88% of the students in present, and that's consistent with last year, but it's about five points higher than we've seen in recent years. So, we're holding on to that positive trend. We have 12 schools had over 95% attendance, and many of our schools experienced higher-than-normal return rates for students. Again, this is just all very positive as students come back. In terms of transportation, after piloting the Zoom transportation technology this summer, we rolled the technology out across our operation for the first day of school last week. For the majority of our bus drivers, families, and school-based staff, the first day of BPS school year was their first time using the technology in real-world conditions. With this new technology rollout, along with what we all know is just heavy traffic across the city and families and staff navigating new routes and greeting new faces for the first time, we did experience significant delays across our operation. On the first day, Thursday, September 5th, 62% of the buses arrived within 15 minutes in the morning. So, that could be one minute, or it could be 15 minutes late. And 73% arrived within 15 minutes in the afternoon. On the second day, 83% arrived within 15 minutes in the morning and 84% arrived within 15 minutes in the afternoon. These day-two numbers, they're very closely aligned to the performance we saw on day one of last year. And additionally, more than 95% of the drivers are utilizing the Zoom Driver app successfully this week, which we consider just a very positive thing, to have the vast majority of the drivers now trained and using it. We also celebrate 10,000 parents and guardians who are representing about 13,000 of our students who have downloaded and actually logged into the Zoom Parent App. We recognize that large-scale change always comes with growing pains. We've talked about this now since the weeks leading up to the opening of school. Families have been advocating for change to improve transportation for many years here in BPS. And while we've made improvements in recent years, we needed to make this investment to create a safer, more transparent, and reliable transportation system and to move beyond the 90% on-time percentage that we finished with last year. Our use of Zoom will create greater reliability for families and greater ridership data, which is needed to make our overall transportation system more efficient. We're already hearing great feedback from our families, happy that they can see buses in real time and know when their student has gotten on and off the bus. We're encouraged by the day-over-day improvements that we've seen already. Each day, the drivers become more familiar in using the app. We anticipate continuing to make steady improvements in the coming days and weeks. We're incredibly grateful to all of our bus drivers, operations, and school-based staff and families who are working to help us build and improve transportation system to provide students with a safe, reliable, and on-time transportation on a daily basis that our parents are asking for. We'll continue to update you on the progress in meetings to follow. I also want to take the opportunity to just remind parents who are listening, if you haven't already downloaded the Zoom app, we would ask you to do so. We would also ask that you download the Parents Square app, because this is the way that you will be receiving in the new district-wide communications platform. We're seeing just wonderful engagement across the schools using it. Monday, we sent our first family newsletter, BPS Beyond the Bell, and since the start of school, we've had about 33,000 members of the BPS community engage with it. So, we celebrate that, and we know that there'll be even more as more and more parents log into it. One big area of focus for us this year, and I know for school committee, is to create engaging family communications, and so that Parents Square is one step in that direction, as is Zoom. Once the caregiver, just as a reminder in downloading the apps, once they download the apps, you as parents will have more control over how you get information from the schools in the district. Families will get all the important alerts, updates, and announcements. Parents Square will also give you additional access to our weekly family newsletter, BPS Beyond the Bell. And again, we're just hearing great feedback from families that they appreciate that level of transparency and communication. I also want to share a brief update on our program with the Yonder phone pouches. We have funding this year to cover the cost of the pouches for schools with grades 5 through 12 that want to use the pouches and have a system in place to pilot them. At this time, 31 schools are using Yonder or gearing up to implement the pouches at their schools. This includes nine elementaries and four high schools who are currently using it, and then an additional 10 elementary and eight high schools who are preparing to roll out the pouches. And we anticipate an additional group of schools electing to use as the year goes on and they get their systems in place. One thing Mayor Wu and I have talked about is how cell phones impact our students' learning and how to strike a balanced approach when we also know that cell phones have become an integral part of our lives. We all can agree that they provide many benefits, but we also have learned from national trend data and studies, as well as our own experiences in schools, that cell phones in schools can also be a distraction to students' learning. We acknowledge that students sometimes need access to their phones during the school day, and so we're working with our schools using Yonder on ways to make opportunities possible and available to them while still using the Yonder system. The day before school started, Wednesday, September 4th, approximately 50 volunteers joined the secondary school's office in conjunction with the re-engagement center and other community partners, and they canvassed the Dorchester, Roxbury, and Jamaica Plain neighborhoods as part of an effort to recover students who may have dropped out of school or who are chronically absent. The effort reached 300 students who were identified as chronically absent, and the definition of that is that they attended in school for less than 90% of the time and those who might have left school altogether. Overall, the re-engagement center met with 748 students who either dropped out or who were currently enrolled but struggling. And the mayor and I joined that staff and the volunteers on that day to be able to make some of those home visits. This is just one strategy in helping us to combat chronic absenteeism. We know we're making progress on our chronic absenteeism. Our projections show that we had anywhere between a 4 and 6, it's still being finalized, but a 4 to 6% decrease in chronic absenteeism last year. And so, cumulatively, for the last two years, that represents a 7 to 10% decrease. This is really a testament to the hard work of our teams here in BPS, in student support, in re-engagement center, supervisors of attendance, our family liaisons, really all working together. And while many districts are seeing chronic absenteeism rise, we are actually seeing it decrease, and so we know that many of the strategies we're doing are working. We also know that there are many reasons why students do not come to school. It's complex. Sometimes, they are caring for other family members, experiencing homelessness themselves, working jobs outside of school to help out at home. They might be struggling with mental health issues and challenges. But we all know students cannot learn, and they can't thrive, and they certainly can't achieve if they aren't in school. So, this year, we're focused on resources. We provided backpacks loaded with school supplies to each student on the list and their siblings. We offered gift cards from Marshalls Stop &amp; Shop and Tropical Foods, and we thank those companies for their donations to help support students' transitions back to school. We know we still have a lot more work to do this year and to ensure our students are in school every day. We are working hard to make sure that we don't just try to return to a pre-COVID level of chronic absenteeism, but we actually go deeper than that and really connect as many students as possible back to school. I want to give a special shout-out to Chief of Student Support Cory McCarthy, Director of BPS Re-Engagement Center Manny Allen, and Brian Marks, our Senior Director for the Department of Opportunity Youth, because really, it's been their continued work and focus with students, bringing them back into our classrooms. A few bright spots. Prior to the first day, the Homes and Condom Schools, students, staff, and families celebrated the end of summer vacation and the start of a new school year with lots of games and food and fun. Special thanks to the Boston Police Operation Hoodsey Cup and the Boston Fire Department for joining in on the fun. On September 3rd, we had approximately 500 educators in Region 5 who joined together for a Day of Professional Development at the Orinberger School in West Roxbury, and here, they focused specifically on inclusive education. This is the first time this has ever been done in BPS. Educators worked together across grade levels and content teams. It was a great opportunity for them to connect and plan with each other, and I really want to give a shout-out to Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Linda Chen, Dr. Kristen Weeks, who is our Region 5 School Soup, and the BPS academic team for their work to pull this event together. I'd like to end tonight just by sharing that tomorrow, Mayor Wu, Chair Robinson, some of the other school committee, city and elected officials will be cutting the ribbon on the Josiah Quincy Upper School building. I've now been in the building multiple times, and it really is a sight to see. It's just a special place, and it's going to be full of learning and opportunity for many generations to come for our students. As I mentioned, I visited the school on the first day, and you can see that in the picture, and there was just a lot of positive energy. The students and the staff were getting used to the building, but you could see they were kind of filled with joy and awe as they walked around, and they saw so many different areas, like the auditorium, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, the cafetorium, their food science lab. I mean, there's just so many special spots in that school. The new six-story building, which the views from the rooftop deck are a sight to see, will accommodate 650 students in grades 6 through 12 and 84 staff across 35 educational spaces and 29 classrooms. The building has an auditorium with 435 seats, a black-spock theater with 125 seats, a 10,000-square-foot gym, a cafeteria that seats about 250 students, I stayed for two of the lunches, and an occupied roof that's an outdoor classroom with a solar array. I hope that tomorrow, the school committee can join in that visit, and it really is just a reminder that as we build new buildings and renovate buildings, the high-quality student experience needs to stay at our forefront so that all students in BPS can have what the Josiah Quincy students are about to have. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. And now, open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes. That's one to two questions. Please make sure your questions are on the topics related to the items in the superintendent's report. And I'd also like to remind BPS staff to be brief in your responses, and please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Superintendent, for the update and all the work that the district's been doing on starting a new school year. A lot of great updates there, but just wanted to really reel in on the transportation, specifically with the app. What are some challenges that have been identified? I have a couple, but just want to hear what the district has already gathered as you all are trying to figure it out.
Sure. So, I'll speak to a few, but I'll also ask Dan Rosengard to come on up. I don't know if Sam DePino wants to go or Brian Ford as well. But really, we've focused a lot on the user end of it. So, for drivers, it's a different experience, needing to log in. And then, each student that comes on, they're registering that student either by the picture that the parent has uploaded or by the student's name. So, that first couple of times, as the drivers are getting used to the students, that's really taking time that wasn't needed before. And that's part of the learning curve, right? So, we've done a lot of work, as Dan will talk about, retraining drivers and supporting drivers who may be struggling with that usage. I think in the first couple of days, we also, in general, see, understandably, parents want to see students off. So, there is like a handoff that happens where it's not just go on the bus. It's, "I am the parent, you are the driver, I want to make sure my student's safe and okay." So, certainly, there's some of that piece that's happening. And even for parents, their usability of the app and then kind of reporting back if they're seeing any kind of a glitch, we're working with Zoom on a daily basis to correct those. Dan, I know you know this like the back of your hand, so jump in.
Yeah. No, thank you for the question, Member Barbosa. I think in addition to what the superintendent said, a couple of things I would add. One is, this is new hardware that we installed across our entire bus fleet. So, that's 750 buses that we installed new. so that's seven hundred and fifty buses that we installed new, you know, new GPS tracking and tablet technology on the buses. And what we've been finding as we've been rolling them out over the first week is, you know, some of those connections needed to be replaced, or, you know, tablets were freezing, needed to be replaced. And so each day, that number has gone down significantly, and I think we're getting to the point now where we feel like, and the transdev maintenance team feels like, you know, those initial hardware challenges are, you know, are and have been resolved. I think, you know, secondly, with the drivers, you know, just learning to use the app and learning the students. One of the things that we've heard, you know, from a number of parents as one of the most frustrating things is, oh, my student was marked as, you know, a no-show when they were actually on the bus, or they were marked as dropped off before they were dropped off. And some of that is, you know, the drivers learning the students, learning their names and faces, and, you know, and making sure that, you know, they're able to identify the right students getting on and off the bus. And then I see you have another question, but just the last thing I'll add is, this is, you know, this being the Zoom technology is, you know, this is the first time that it's been, we used it over the summer, but traffic patterns in the summer are very different than they are in, you know, in September with all school buses on the road and, you know, post-Labor Day traffic. And we now have about a week's worth of data, you know, traffic pattern data. And what we know happened over the summer and will, you know, happen over the, you know, next week and coming weeks is the routes will adjust as that data is, you know, fed back into the system. And some of the timings that maybe we're off right now will be adjusted, and that will also help us to see improvements in our on-time performance each week.
Thank you, Dan. I know you're receiving a lot of requests, so I appreciate the effort that you all putting in. And it seems like it's an added responsibility to the drivers, right? Now they have to like go into a device and communicate what's happening, so that's probably adding another minute or so of the bus being stopped even after having the kids inside, so I totally get that. Is there, was there any communication that was being sent to the family in the event that, for example, the bus is late, the bus is not showing up? Because I'll give you one example, just because it's my neighbor. For the first week, there wasn't one day that the student made it to school on time either because the bus was late or the bus didn't show up, so the father ended up driving. I know we're going to have cases like that because of the many factors that you already pointed out, but one of the questions that I had for the father was like, did you receive any communication? Did you call the call center? Did you put in a report? And as of right now, he hasn't received anything, so I'm just wondering like, how are we managing the anxiety that we are, you know, in a way inflicting on parents of like, I don't want my kid to like be absent and be reported absent? So just wanted to learn a little bit on how we're following up with families that are not listening right now, for example.
Yeah, no. So we have all of our past and existing systems in place. So that's our transportation hotline, our schoolbus@bostonpublicschools.org email address, and our ticketing system where parents can go, you know, to any of those places. And then what the, another, what, one of the things that the Zoom app adds is, you know, when it's working correctly. And right now, as the superintendent said, we have about ninety-five percent of drivers using it on a daily basis. That's, it's actually a little bit ahead of what we've heard from Zoom in terms of where they would see other districts about a weekend. So on that front, I think we are doing quite well. Once we get that to a hundred percent on a daily basis, the app experience for parents will provide real-time ETAs, and there's automated push notifications that go out if the bus is running more than twenty minutes late. And what we have heard from, you know, quite a few parents is something along the lines of, well, the bus is running really late, which is very frustrating, but the app experience is very nice, and I actually can see it and track along the way. And so I think, you know, I'd love to follow up with you after and get the specifics on that student and make sure that, you know, for that bus, it's tracking correctly.
I appreciate it. I know my time is probably running out. Another thing, not for today, but would be good as you all are learning more about the app, maybe come back later with some data of like the routes where the buses were late. The buses didn't show up. I would like to see where in the district that's happening. And then I know charter schools have also been informing that they've been having issues with the buses, but it's all, it's under the same umbrella. But no, just again, we'll get there. It's a new app. It's a new experience. I think really continue to engage with families throughout the school year because you're always going to have new families coming into the district that needs to learn about it. If it's with the family liaisons, if it's, I don't know, when parents are meeting with teachers to learn about what's going on with their kids, just finding those spaces that already exist to continue to engage. I didn't ask this when it first came out, and that was my bad. Is it only in English right now, or do they have the options to utilize in other languages?
Oh, that's a great question. I really appreciate you asked it. It's available in all of the BPS languages and actually quite a few more than that. So whatever language the, you know, parent has their phone in, that's the language the app will use.
And the driver as well, right? Like it's, the driver has the ability of, if they are preferring to use Incaver and Grill, because maybe it's just easier for them. Is that something that they can do? Do you know?
The driver app is in English.
Is in English? Okay. All right. Just figured if that was, and English access was also something available to them. But thank you so much. Again, I really appreciate all of that you all have been doing, and let me know how I can be supportive.
Thank you.
Dan, can you just explain, I mentioned in the report, we're seeing unprecedented numbers of students enrolling later within BPS. Can you just explain the impact that that has on the bus routes?
Yeah, so what that means is, you know, as new students are coming in, we need to update the bus routes. And I think as of August ninth, as of kind of the snapshot of the student population on August ninth, that is when we lock the bus routes for what we call the driver's bid. And that's, you know, a contractually obligated process where they select their work for the year. And then we continue routing, obviously, as new students are coming in. And we saw, I think, over two thousand students who had some sort of change in their transportation. So that could have been a new school, or they moved, or a new IEP that was entered after that time. So that's almost ten percent of the students who ride buses who had some sort of routing change where, you know, what the drivers bid on is different than what they did on the first day of school. And we're continuing to see that, I think, with, you know, Superintendent, you cited the stats earlier just on even from today. We had over a hundred new students from last night to today come into our routing system. And so that's where, you know, we're trying to add all those new students to routes as well as, you know, address some of the challenges that we see with the, you know, the routes that are already there. And so it's kind of a constant, you know, constant tension there.
Yeah, and I just want to say, we love every student that comes to us, right? So keep sending your students to us. We love that. It just does add the complexity, right, of the routing. I think one of the stats that jumped out to me was since August ninth, two-thirds of the bus drivers on the road have experienced a change, which is a lot more than what we normally see.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent, for the report. Bienvenido, Omar. Es Omar, verdad? Omar?
Omar.
Bienvenido. Es bien importante escuchar la voz de los jóvenes representados por ti.
So thank you very much, Madam Skipper, Madam Superintendent, Madam Robinson, Chair. And it is very welcoming to hear the voice of a student. And I would like to say welcome as a new representative of the students here. You're welcome, Omar.
Tuve la oportunidad de visitar algunas escuelas y algunos estudiantes con los que hablé me dijeron: "Wow, el distrito empezó bien, la comida está bien buena."
I had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to talk to a couple of students, actually, and they were very good reviews. And a couple of students mentioned to me, actually, the food was pretty good, so it was a pretty good start.
We'll pass that on to Annalise. That's great.
Que la comida estaba fresca, que tenían muchos años, algunos me dijeron comiéndome el pan frío, Rafa, pero esta comida está calientita y tiene la ensalada fresca.
So the food was pretty fresh, and a couple of students mentioned, actually, I've been, we've been having cold bread for several years, but actually the food is warm and the salad is fresh.
En ese sentido, mi pregunta es, porque sé que no todas las escuelas han tenido esta oportunidad de tener esta comida fresca que es tan importante para nuestros estudiantes. Cuántas escuelas, cuál es el plan para que podamos tener esta comida fresca en todas las escuelas?
So I do know that the food service or having the possibility of having this fresh food has not been equal to every single school. So I just needed to know what schools or how many schools are being served the fresh food and if we can quantify that, because it is my understanding that not every school has that pleasure.
So I think our Chief Operating Officer, Brian Ford, and I'm proud to say that, can come up and give, but I think at the last count, it was a hundred and eight.
Good afternoon. So yes, we did have a hundred and eight schools that are able to serve fresh food. At the opening of the school year, we had ninety-
Excuse me. No varios de transmisión.
No, I'll interpret for Rob, because the other interprets, you cannot hear the other interpreter. Pero se quedan ciento ocho escuelas.
¿Cuántos?
Ciento ocho. Hundred and eight schools, correct?
That's right. One hundred and eight schools have cooking kitchens inside of them. At the start of the school year, a lot of it due to staffing, we were only able to start with ninety-nine schools cooking. And so throughout the rest of the fall, we're going to continue to improve our vacancies in the Food and Nutrition Department to make sure we can continue to open more and more schools for cooking availability within each one of those.
Muchas gracias. Esto es bien importante para nuestra familia. Recuerda que hay muchas familias de nosotros que dependen mucho de la comida de la escuela. Yo creo que el tener buenos alimentos hace que nuestros estudiantes tengan una mayor eficiencia.
Thank you very much for the information that you are provided. And nutrition is actually critical for all our students. The better nutrition we have in schools, the better performance the students would have in schools. So it is something that is critical. Nutrition is very important.
La segunda cosa que quisiera compartir, que quisiera decir a los papás, si eres nuevo y estás escuchando esta transmisión por primera vez, quiero decirte, papá, mamá, involúcrate en la escuela de tu hijo. Están empezando los concilios de padres porque no abres el idioma inglés. Mereces tener la oportunidad de estar involucrado en la escuela de tu hijo.
So just wanted to direct my voice to, if there's any parents or mothers hearing to what we are saying right now, this meeting, please get involved. Get involved in your schools. The fact that you do not speak the language should not be a barrier, should not be a limitation. There are different opportunities for you at the school council and many things. So please get involved if you're hearing what I'm saying. Language is not a barrier.
Conoce el maestro de tu hijo como mamá, como papá, tienes, tenemos la responsabilidad de estar en la escuela de nuestros hijos, de pedir información en la escuela de la escuela, de hablar con los maestros de nuestros hijos. Entonces, si tú no lo haces, papá y mamá, no te vas a involucrar en el proceso educativo de tu hijo. Es una responsabilidad como mamá de estar en la escuela de mi hijo y poder pedir las cosas que hacen falta para mi hijo porque es un derecho que tú tienes.
It is very important that the parents and the fathers and the mothers understand it is a right that they have. It is a responsibility that they have. Please get involved. Have a conversation with your teachers. Try to gather some information. Ask for information. Give information. If you do not get involved, that'll be a deterrent to our children's education. Get involved. Get information. Ask questions. Get involved any possible way you can because it is your children's education.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's Dakota Hernandez.
One, welcome, Omar. We're so happy you're here and excited to work together. So youth voice, just your voice, it doesn't matter. I'm just happy that you're here, so thank you for joining us. I will also say on the food, this was not planned, but I'm having my own parental morning because my son loves the school lunch, and so we're no longer able to make a lunch, which is, on the cost-benefit side, lovely, free twenty minutes. But, you know, there's like a sad departure, and he comes home rave reviews. But he also has, gets to go to a school with, you know, fresh meals. I do have just a few questions. First is just on the new registrations. Where are we seeing the uptick? If you can sort of walk us through any of that data? And then what do you think is, I think, two pieces, like what's the cause? Where, like, sort of what has happened? What's changed that's allowed this to happen? And then what's any learnings from that as well?
So I don't know if we have the breakdown right now of those registrations. We can get them for you. I do know that we are seeing, in an awesome way, a lot of students coming from the DR and coming from Haiti. Those are two groups that have been identified right now as largely representative. We're also seeing a lot of students returning to the BPS who had been in the BPS. That's great. But we can get a breakdown as to, is it the areas of the city, the grade levels? What would you?
It's interesting to know grade level, just as we're thinking of like future planning system-wise. Like where are we, what are new entry grades? It may be just a big scatter plot. But like, or is it younger families entering the system and late registering? So like, I guess there's some learning there about sort of peak enrollment when it happens and how we meet people. But then also, interesting to think about what new populations are also arriving to the city? And then as we're resourcing, this is, you know, my own suspicion. If we're getting folks who are arriving from Haiti or from the Dominican Republic, then the need for other services as well. Great. I do have, I guess, a quick wondering, I have a second piece. Do we have a hiring update, which wasn't included today, but can you bring that forward for us too?
So the hiring update will happen on, I think it's the first school committee meeting in October when they process the data.
Copy. The transportation conversation, I just want to, I have two more questions in addition to what's been discussed. I guess sort of four steps back, I do think, well, maybe I'll ask that question second. The first question is around the data that we'll get from Zoom. So I am curious, like, is this data that then informs routing? If we're doing, if students are signing in to buses, does this then inform information we have around long-term no-shows? Like, how do we use that data, great parent-facing tool, but then just for the internal mechanics for the operation? How does that all sort of piece together?
Yeah, so as Dan comes up, I'll share my thoughts on it. I think there's a lot of, first of all, from a safety perspective, it's really important to know when students are getting on and off the bus and who's getting on and off the bus. I would also use this as an opportunity to ask parents, particularly of younger students, please mark belongings so that we actually have identification on the students. Can't say that enough. But I think it's also, from a ridership perspective, it is to this point. How often is a student taking the bus? Are they not using it? And we're routing them as a way to be able to make routes more efficient so that we're not waiting at bus stops for students, which then delays the route. Dan?
Yeah, I think that's exactly right, is, you know, we anecdotally know that we route twenty-three thousand students every year, and some significant portion of those students either rarely or never ride the bus. But we've never been able to say who those students are with any, you know, level of comprehensive accuracy. And so this will allow us to gather that data. It doesn't help us immediately, but when we look to, you know, how are we routing for next year? Or even, you know, can we make adjustments to improve efficiencies, you know, for the spring? We're going to look at that data, and that will tell us who actually needs the bus so that we can, you know. Part of the challenge here is just we're trying to create too many routes, you know.
Is there, like, part of the workflow, is there a plan to address non-ridership? Like, I'm making up a number, fifteen days you haven't been on the bus. I'm remembering my old days as a principal too, right? Like you have a no-show for so many days, and there's like a course of action that you take. What happens there for the sort of routing?
It's a fantastic question. It's actually something, knowing that Zoom and this data was coming, it's something that we talked about extensively in the Transportation Advisory Council this past spring. And actually, I think, late spring, early summer, the Transportation Advisory Council kind of collectively made a unanimous recommendation on a draft ridership policy. And step one of that was committing to using the fall to gather the data. But essentially, what, you know, what that group has recommended is something just like what you're saying, where if a student doesn't ride the bus for ten days, then we reach out to the family and say, you know, let us know, are you going to return to the bus? If not, we might remove the bus assignment.
Copy. Yeah, I think, yeah, keep going.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I can't emphasize enough over the last several years how for a system that's enterprise- how for a system that's enterprise, the transportation system was not. And I think Dan and his team and Prior Dell, I think they've had a collective vision to bring us into the 21st century, so, which makes for safer, more efficient, transparent. And so while there is this learning curve in the end for parents and for the district, this is just going to help us provide a different level of service to folks that we haven't been able to because we just frankly haven't had the systems and the data.
Yeah. I also just wonder, we have conversations around the cost implications of the transportation system and the sort of ballooning cost. I think with like more accurate data and a more aggressive approach in handling that data, I suspect there's, there has to be savings. We've talked about this here many times, right? Like the empty buses just like rolling through the streets. There has to be savings if we're cutting routes faster and moving faster to do that, hopefully. The last thing here, and then I'm good, is just, I guess, two things. How did we choose Zoom as the option? Like sort of what was the process that went through and did we get any stakeholder feedback on that and what was that like? And then in that same question, I think there's a part of me, I'm like, I've heard all the reasons why the first week has been tough, but then all of them seem like things that we could have planned for. Like, we knew there would have been a user, we knew someone was taking attendance on the bus and that would have taken a second. We know the history of drop-off with a kid and the time it takes. But what was missing is not that it was a 100% perfect first day of school, bus experience. I guess what's missing, I'm just thinking about it from like a parent end, is just like the preemptive communication around it, like anticipate delays to the, which we could have anticipated, to, I'm just keeping it real, just like a straight-up, I'm sorry. Like every communication we've had about it so far has been like, and this is the reason why, traffic was bad. Da-da-da-da-da, like the, but like, I'm just a parent who doesn't have time to read all the like, traffic was bad, the computer system is, was a struggle. I just want to be like, I'm sorry, I messed up your first day of, like, I'm sorry you were late to work. I'm sorry you waited 45 minutes and then had to take Uber to bring your kid to school. Or in the case we heard, like a whole week of no. And I'm just, I'm being real, and I think this is about our engagement with communities. As a consumer of the system, like that isn't what we've heard. We've heard all the reasons it would have been complicated, but some of them are just like, we didn't give people a heads up, like we're rolling out this new system and you're, it might be 40 minutes of a delay. And then a parent can be like, I don't want to miss the opening ceremony at school on the first day. Like, I'm going to take my kid. Just, you know, I'm keeping it real. I think like that part's missing in this. And then I hope we do that planning and that preemptive communication for day one next year because we're always going to have delay. You're going to, who's this kid? Who's coming? What's happening? I just, we got to do better on the upfront communication and then I do think like just on the apology. Yeah, but I have a seven-year-old, so like we don't do like, I'm sorry, but, and I feel like we've done a lot of like, I'm sorry, but.
I appreciate that question. I think you're right. I think we could have done a better job beforehand saying, we're doing this new thing, we think this is going to be great, but there's a learning curve to it. And, you know, the first couple of weeks might, you know, might be rough.
And I think people hear that. Like, I just, just so you know, like, I think like, the people of Boston and the parents in Boston are like just down for straight-up communication. And like, I think people would have heard, if someone said to me like, dear parent, there's a chance your bus is going to be 40 minutes late on the first day of school because of these issues, I might have waited or I might have not, but like, it would have been better than just like, I'm waiting.
I think that's right. And just briefly, because you asked, we ran an RFP last June and awarded a contract last August after review. So we got five bids, you know, we evaluated those bids, we did, you know, reference checks with other districts that they've worked with.
Cool.
Happy to go into more detail on that if you have follow-ups.
That's perfect. No, I just wanted the history refresher. Thank you. And thank you for hearing me out on that one.
Thank you. Come back for a second. I have a few questions about translation. Don't go away that quickly. At first I want to say thank you, and you know, and I know this is a tough one. Trying to get to a school for the first day, it took me 25 minutes to get off of my street to someplace that I should have been able to get in 10 minutes and couldn't get there because it was trash day. And many parents had chosen to drive their kids to school and any number of things. We know that we are a city that has some of the toughest traffic. And I know how difficult that makes all of the good efforts and everything that people put in place. And 90% is great, but if you're part of that 10%, who didn't get there? It's a tough one. And I, you know, and I hope as time goes on, the things that Mr. Cardet Hernandez proposed and the kind of work that, you know, we can get to the point where we both appreciate all that goes into this and understanding that there's a lot you have no ability to control. But that all of our goal of getting all of our kids to school on time, if possible, is great. And I know, I mean, being at a school, watching kids dribble in after the bell or, you know, and sometimes, I mean, I think some of the concerns I see are kids who are anxious because they got on a bus on time, they know what time their bell happens. And depending on the school, arriving late under no control of your own is either handled well or not. So I think that's the other piece that we have to work on. Children don't control the traffic either, but we don't want to have their anxiety rising over something that they can't control. So, but I know that, so I, I'm hoping that there are ways that we can continue to talk and to talk with parents too about having reasonable expectations. And, you know, as a city, encouraging people that don't have to be on the roads at certain times not to be there so that we can ease, you know, the traffic. I mean, I'm sure that doesn't make much sense to people, but it's sort of like, how can we all be in this together if our ultimate goal is being able to get our kids to school on time as much as possible? But I just want you to know that your efforts are great and we thank you and look forward to seeing Zoom improve over time. No, I was going to say, as we enroll kids, how is that impacting? I mean, you said, you know, you know, at what point do we, how, what is the delay between my enrollment and my ability to be on a bus? And how do we work that through? And then my second question's a little different. You know, I know some children get special transportation because they have an IEP. If I have three children in my family all going to the same school, one on an IEP that gets door-to-door and two that are not, does the whole family able to ride with the child with the least, with the most restrictive issue? Or are we putting kids of the same family going to the same place in two different locations? How are we making that work for families? And how are we flagging special circumstances for families with either, you know, multiple siblings in different schools and different ages? Or even on the other side, a parent who has a physical disability and is unable to be in three places for three different pickups? You know, where within your system does that kind of need get directed?
Yeah. No, thank you Chair Robinson. I think, I think, I think you're highlighting there are so many different types of situations. And, you know, and we try within, within the system to, you know, to handle all of those, you know, as efficiently as possible. I think to your, to your first question, just to try to use, you know, a really specific example, let's say that there were about 100 families, I think, or 100 students, I think, that, that either registered at the Welcome Center yesterday or, you know, had an address change or something changed with their transportation yesterday, their transportation eligibility. So that was changed yesterday by the family. It came through overnight into our routing system. Our team now looks to add those students either to an existing route or needs to adjust a route or add a new route, you know, for that student. And then on Thursday, we will, what we call publish routes that will take effect next Wednesday. So students who are, you know, coming in, their transportation is, you know, like I said, it kind of, we publish things on Thursday for changes that take effect the following Wednesday. And on Fridays, we send out notifications to families in email, mail and through Zoom, you know, translated into their home language, letting them know you have a new bus assignment. It takes effect next Wednesday. So that's kind of the process from when you come into the Welcome Center to when your transportation starts. And then in terms of families, we, if you have, you know, say, one student who has door-to-door transportation and two other students who just received general transportation all at the same school, we will put them all at the door. That's the most efficient. But sometimes we, you know, the system does not necessarily capture all of that upfront. And so sometimes it's not until the school or family lets us know and we look and we say, oh, yep, these siblings aren't, you know, marked as siblings in Aspen, okay, we need to get that fixed. And now, you know, now we know, now it'll be corrected. And so we're working through correcting some of those right now. And I think we need to continue to think, how do we better capture that data? You know, so that we don't lose it each year going forward.
Again, thank you very much and we look forward to your next report at the next meeting so we can see what progress has been made.
Thank you.
Superintendent, a question, I know you all went out to do the door knocking for chronic absenteeism. Is that only students at the high school level or do you go to children, elementary, middle school kids?
So this, the door knock was specifically high school, but we have a very strong system when a student is a minor with attendance to, you know, be underneath the 16-year-old compulsory. And so we make sure that the school calls home after a certain amount of absence. And if need be, a house visit will happen. So we use the same process during the school year of students of attendance and our family engagement, liaisons and our social workers. But for the door knocking event, that was particularly guided toward the high school students.
Thank you. And then just one last question. I was excited to hear about BPS beyond the bell. How can that be made available to all of us?
Well, since the Chief of Communications is here, I'm sure he could take note of that one and add it to everybody. Great.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any questions, Omar, before we move on? Okay, sticking in, okay. Thank you. If that is all, I would just want to say thank you all and I will now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report.
So.
Thank you. Is there, is there a motion? Sorry. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I guess we got them both. Thank you. And is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the superintendent's report is approved. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvex.
Thank you Chair.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me. I think we, we had to have a shift that we are going to actually take the EMK charter amendment out of order because it's a school night before we move into public comment. And it didn't get changed in my plan, but fine. Excuse me. Karen, I'm going to find that in a second.
And I can give some context. So this evening, we are joined by Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Career's School Leader, Dr. Karen Walker Gregory, who will present a proposed charter amendment. EMK is a Horace Mann Charter School, also called an in-district Charter School. Because of this status, the proposed change does require the approval of the school committee. The proposal has also received the support of the Boston Teachers Union. The charter amendment would increase the maximum number of students at the school from its current 448 to 800 in grades nine through 12 over the next four years, beginning in the fall of 2025 and continuing through school year 28, 29. You may remember back in January, we joined the city of Boston in announcing that Bloomberg Philanthropies awarded the EMK $38 million grant, the largest gift in BPS history to expand its college and career health pathways. This funding will allow the school to grow its partnership with Mass General Brigham. Earlier today, Mayor Wu and I joined the EMK school community at a back-to-school town meeting at the Reggie Lewis Center where students attended Mass General Brigham simulations, signed up for extracurriculars, visited the MG, the Mass General Brigham Community Care Van, had a fun lunch and did a wonderful cheerleader show. It was a reminder that EMK is a BPS success story. This is really about engaged students, exciting, excited to have the opportunity to engage in hands-on career and technical education. EMK is a sought-after school with a waitlist of more than 300 students. It has high graduation rates and high college acceptance rates. It has a longstanding commitment to full inclusion as well as a proven track record of successfully expanding its enrollment. Dr. Ted Lombardi, who is our Secondary Superintendent for College Career and Readiness, is also here to support with any follow-up questions that you may have. And at this point, Chair, if it's fine with you, I will pass it over to Dr. Gregory Walker.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Robinson, Superintendent Skipper and the school committee members. Thank you for allowing me to present today. Just want to remind folks that I've been in this district for over 34 years.
Actually, maybe put the mic a little closer to you.
Should I use my cafeteria voice? You know that. I've been in the district for over 34 years. I am a graduate of Boston Public Schools and I am the proud head of school of the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers. So thank you again for taking this time to talk a little bit about our request. As you have indicated, Mary Skipper had mentioned that we are a recipient of $38 million, which is the largest that I have seen in my lifetime. And we really are excited to ask.
Excuse me, Dr. Gregory. People still can't hear you.
Still can't hear me? Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, might have to pull out that cafeteria voice.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, sorry. I thought, no, it sounds like you can hear me, but it doesn't.
There it is.
All right. So in order to implement this $38 million Bloomberg philanthropy opportunity, we're asking the Boston School Committee approval of an amendment to our charter to expand our enrollment from 448 to 800 students in grades nine through 12 over four years, beginning in September 2025. Now, obviously, we are super excited as part of the Long Range Plan. The city of Boston and BPS and EMK seek to offer more Boston students and families a high-quality student experience. We would be increasing access to high-quality seats, differentiate career-connected learning with clear pathways into college and career, and commitment to full inclusion. This expansion will allow us to increase our Chapter 74 Health Assisting Program, which includes the EMT, medical imaging, and of course, nursing. It will also add medical laboratory services and surgical technology and central sterile processing. These are all opportunities for our students around, again, health assisting, biotech and medical assisting. So we're really excited about expanding the opportunities for kids. We are trying to deepen and extend the workplace learning at Mass General Brigham for our grades nine through 12. We will expand our partnership with Mass General Brigham. They're not new to us, but we're just expanding. We are really looking at early college and acceleration to college for all of our students. This grant also supports full inclusion with co-teaching and interventionists to support ELA, math and science, especially in grades nine and 10. We are deepening our SEL and academic supports around guidance, social workers and reading specialists. specialists. We are also expanding our after-school and summer employment at MGB. And last, we are trying to, uh, also create, um, part-time employment and scholarships for kids. It's a wonderful opportunity. Okay, expansion at EMK serves Boston students. So, as you, well, you may not know, but we've had great success rates in terms of when it comes to college acceptance rates, um, outstanding graduation rates. We always had low dropout rates. We have also had the highest DESI school accountability percentile of all Boston nine-through-twelve high schools. We continue to maintain a hundred percent competency determination in all three MCAS subjects for all students. We have a growing population of students with disabilities and multilingual learners. And we have a longstanding and success commitment, successful commitment to full inclusion. We still are high demand for our Boston families and our successful experience, have successful experience managing enrollment expansion. This is not our first time expanding. We, uh, were asked to expand excellence under the, um, Superintendent Carol Johnson, moving our enrollment from two hundred to four hundred. This just talks a little bit about what it looks like each year. We really are adding about a hundred kids in the ninth grade every year for the next four years. Starting in September two thousand twenty-five. EMK seeks Boston School Committee approval to submit to DESI a charter amendment request expanding the maximum enrollment at EMK from four forty-eight to eight hundred students. This also has to go to the Board of Trustees, um, and we are excited to have received yesterday a, um, commitment and support from the Boston Teachers Union. We got that yesterday, so we're really excited. And I will stop and take questions.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll now open it up to the committee.
Thank you for the presentation. Learned more about, uh, your school. Just one question, what is, if any, impact in terms of like the physical space that you'll need with the increase of, of the expansion, I mean?
Yeah, so we are excited to be able to expand next year, being September two thousand twenty-five, and we're gonna be at the Lincoln Building temporarily until we, um, along with the superintendent and the mayor's office, find some permanent space. So we are hoping that, uh, we utilize this year, this academic year, to identify some permanent space. But in the meantime, we have a backup plan of, of the Lincoln Building, which is the Josiah Quincy, um, space as a, uh, swing space.
Last question, Mr. Kennedy Hernandez.
One, thank you so much for the presentation. Um, it's exciting to learn more about your school. I've heard so much about it before, but it's good to hear it from you. I do have a question, but it's more for the superintendent. As we think about that level of growth, you know what my question is.
I do.
As we think about that level of growth, something has to close. So where, we've, we're, if we're adding a hundred seats and we're already experiencing decline, wh- what's that journey? And is there a vision that this is happening simultaneously, right? Or we're, we're naming this expansion and identifying where we're reducing seat availability?
Sure, so, uh, we are not naming tonight where that offset would be. Um, that will come as we talk about long-term facilities plan and we do the routine that we've talked about in the spring. Uh, what I will say is unique about EMK is that EMK really does serve a, a broad spectrum of students that we hope are served in the BPS. So, uh, Karen mentioned special education and inclusion and having those opportunities for high-quality seats, same thing with our multilingual learners. Uh, as a Horace Mann, Karen serves all students that come into the lottery, and those are the types of high-quality seats we need to expand. We also talked about the need to expand the seats so that as we optimize the district, we do have more opportunities for students who might not be in a seat that's high-quality right now to be able to move. I think the other interesting thing about, um, EMK is that it has the unique ability and always has to draw students back into the BPS. Uh, and so one of the things that my team let me know, but, uh, your question about registration, our two fastest-growing right now in the registration are our youngest students in our high schools. So we're seeing more students coming into the high school level as we increase the quality of our high schools and the opportunities. So EMK is perfectly positioned to draw back students who either would have gone to private or to charter, uh, or perhaps made a different choice. And so Karen and her staff do a great job going out and promoting EMK to share that communication with parents, and it works. So for lots of reasons, this expansion makes sense, and it actually helps us to continue to build that foundation of increasing high-quality seats.
I will set, you know, and I've, I said this last time we voted on a, the different, sort of the grade-level policy, that for me, and I, I wish the rest of the board was with me on this, like, there is, we have a problem in voting on individual schools outside of a master plan. So, I know we're not voting on this tonight. This is great information, and I'm, this is exciting, and to your point, like, we want to be able to expand high-quality seats. And at the same time, we have a history of, of carrying financial burden for low-quality seats that we are not using. And I don't want to further exacerbate the problem by adding another, a fresh hundred in September and not having the tough conversation about where the reduction also lives in order to keep the sort of bottom line aligned. So for, just as we're going into it, I'm just, that's where I'm coming from going into a vote, and so if we can clarify some of that, great. And if not, I probably will hold true to what I had said previously, which is like, with that, i- in lieu of a master facilities plan, or at least directionally where we're gonna s- show reduction, it feels tough financially to, to, you know, keep sort of moving one-offs forward. But this is exciting, and I want young people to have these seats.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would say, um, is, I would, I just want to remind us, when we talk about seats, we're actually talking about children. And the, the beauty of EMK is that EMK is serving district population, which it's, if this were only regular education seats, then I would say, point taken. But EMK has a history of serving a large group of special education, multilingual learners. So these are exactly the high-quality seats we do want to increase.
I want both. It's just on the, the budget line, my fear of the ballooning budget without reduction is that we won't be able to do high-quality seats for the most vulnerable kids because we're holding on to seats that we don't need, and then therefore staffing them.
I would just say that we will never be in a position where we are overstaffing special education and multilingual learners who are our most vulnerable students, because those are the seats that we actually have to create in as high-quality in locations. And we have to do that before we do other optimization, otherwise students don't have a place to go. So the beauty of EMK is it's going to be creating a hundred seats in twenty-five, twenty-six that students who are special education, multilingual learners will have access to, to be able to go into that are high-quality.
Then mayb- then maybe for further clarification, then for the next presentation, then what percentage are we saying of that hundred is projected for those populations? Cause I think that would then help.
I think it would be also, it's, when we do recruitment, we're recruiting across the whole city, not just in Boston.
They can't hear you, Karen.
Don't wanna, I don't know why people can't hear me. Sorry. So I just want, I think it's important to recognize that when we do recruitment, we are not recruiting just in Boston public schools, but we're recruiting outside, private, the charters that are closing, and we're trying to bring back people into the district. I understand your question, I, and I hear you, um, but it's also recognizing that the three hundred people that didn't get in, I'm able to expand and welcome them a seat.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's really important, and then I think, just, so we're operating with the richest information, and I guess what is the projected seat? Like, who, who is the projected utilization? And some of that we'll have from the three hundred who were denied, and then, sort of, how do we plan to use those seats? Yeah.
I mean, I, I just think, um, it's an exciting time to be a teenager. And if I'm able, I, when we started this school, it was only a hundred and fifty kids. And I was really, really emotional about the kids that didn't get in. And I said, jeez, we're gonna expand. We're gonna go to four hundred. And I'm still like emotional about the kids. I had a parent today said, please, please. I said, we're, we're over, we're over our number right now, but, you know, we have a waitlist, and, um, don't be discouraged. But, um, it's, it's a great feeling when parents get what they want.
Amen. Yeah, I see that. Thank you.
Uh, just a follow-up, uh, um, on the questions raised by member Brandon Hernandez. Could you also please, before we vote next time or whatever, or before we approve or disapprove your, your request, please submit any kind of information regarding your endeavor in, first of all, the breakdown or, and all the, and all the percentage of ELL students who are currently in your school?
Happy to.
The percentage of, of those ELL students? And, um, the kind of effort that you are going to implement in reaching out to, uh, those communities, ELL communities? Okay?
Yeah, we're blessed to have a, um, wonderful multilingual learner department chair, who does a lot of that, uh, recruitment around students. So happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, given the award, um, and knowing the struggles that you have had in terms of addressing the need for the number of students that you've had to turn away each year, I mean, I understand what superintendent's been talking about that. We can't, uh, we, we need the high-quality placements to put people in if we're gonna go back and shut down programs that are not working. But we do have to build those, um, seats. So I'm excited that you have a temporary location at the, um, Lincoln School, but, um, interested in thoughts around where? Cause I know that we've had difficulty in the past trying to find space for your existing students. What's gonna be the push and the charge as we try to move forward to figure out a school for four hundred, five hundred, six, you know, eight hundred kids? And how quickly is the district going to be able to make that happen in a way that it is successful overall to the nature of your program, which has students traveling to particular parts of the city to access their learning, in, in addition to wherever they're coming from, just to get to you? So just understanding some of those logistics and the things that you've all been thinking about as part of this proposed expansion.
Yeah, I, do you, it's okay. I, well, thanks to the city of Boston and the superintendent's office, we have been on this journey for about a year. So we've been exploring several, several locations. We're just trying to make sure because it requires a lot of reconstruction, um, and permits and just the whole process can't happen overnight. Um, I am confident that we will land on a wonderful site, and, uh, I believe it just takes time. It just wouldn't happen in September. So I feel very confident that we're gonna, um, probably have a decision by the end of this school year on where we're going. I feel we've, we've, this is not something overnight. We've been looking at this for about a year.
Chair Robinson, I appreciate the question. I think to your point, there's a real, um, large scale of priorities that we're trying to balance here, right? That the space itself is really important, having a great space for this innovative set of programming for a large amount of students, but the location really matters too. And part of the agreement with Mass General Brigham is that students will have really robust clinical experiences at an MGB hospital, be it the Brigham or Mass General or another affiliated hospital. So the location matters, but also access to public transit matters if we can't get a location that's as perfect as we want. So it's a complex process, but that's why we're being so detailed in, in how we go about it.
And the last thing I would say is, we want to do it right. We don't want to rush it. And we're, and I think people are very thoughtful, and we just want to do it right. This is not gonna happen twice. So, um, I appreciate people's patience around making a great decision as to where the next home for EMK will be.
I, I know the maximum each year would be an additional hundred. Would you ever look, I mean, would there be a, a moment to take a look that maybe it's fifty students and not a hundred? You know, I'm not sure, you know, how, I, I'm thinking about the balance on the rest of the district. I'm thinking on the ability to, to grow and have the, the kinds of resources, you know, that you need. W- where is that fine line between, not all or nothing, but could it be, you know, could you, would it always have to be a hundred students every year? Could it be a hundred and then fifty, or, you know, and then, I don't know. I just don't know what the rhythm could be besides if there was an option outside of a hundred for each year of four years?
There's always room for options, madam. I think, I think when we developed the proposal, the idea was to get to at least eight hundred. What drives the budget is the number of students and sustainability. Um, and so there's a rationale behind why it's a hundred and not fifty. Um, and if we do fifty, then we have to figure out how we balance that extra fifty. So, easier said than done, but there, there is a little rationale behind why it's that number.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in, you know, h- how do we know which students are interested in this kind of programming? What are the wider options? And particularly, what are we doing at the lower grades, six, seven, eight, to help young people become aware of the option? And if it's not a seven-to-twelve school, not so much a feeder, but where are we, where, where are kids being introduced to this potential? Where are families being introduced to this as an option that would enable us to see more people taking advantage of, uh, high quality, an already proven high-quality experience?
I think there's a couple ways to look at it. I think, um, we've always been wanting to expand seven through twelve because that's the way the district is going. So that's definitely not off of the table. But when we recruit, we go to every K-to-eight middle school in the city, not just Boston, but every private parochial and charter. And so we actively recruit. We have a recruitment team that goes and visits schools, or sometimes they come to us, and we share our story, and thus the waitlist.
Great, thank you. It'll be great to be able to have some of that data for us for the next meeting so we can understand the, what the great potential that you all have and have been doing to make this proposal.
Yeah, I would just-
Yeah, I would just, I would also just add that this is an example of a proposed vote that actually comes with the largest gift to the BPS, $38 million, which is $38 million to create 400 high quality seats that we can then take other dollars to create more high quality seats in other schools. So this is actually the best of all worlds because Karen and her team have done such an amazing job working with the Bloomberg philanthropy as a way to bring resource into our district and our city at a time when we need it. So kudos to you, Principal Gregory Walker.
Appreciate you.
No, not yet. Sorry, I, I, first of all, I do appreciate the, the question from Brand, from member Brandon Hernandez regarding the financial aspect of the additional funding. But it may also be, you know, a two, how do you say it? You know, a double edged sword because it may also affect the current financial budget of the city if the seats are not, are not as productive as it should be. And I see that as well. That is something I would leave to the administration to and, and, and your school to take care of or to find ways to deal with that. But anyway, I would like to amend my request regarding ELL students. I'd like to add the, another angle to that, the students with disability, particularly the kind of projects, policies, endeavors that your school are trying to, that your school are currently implementing or are thinking of implementing in reaching out and increase the number of students to your school, particularly within those two additional groups of students that I, that I just raised.
Happy to share the data around this, the multilingual learners in our special education program. We are a full inclusion school. We don't believe in sub separate. We believe kids should be all in the same classroom. That's what we've been practicing for several years. I am blessed to have staff that are dual certified. And we are now creating a model where there's another person in the classroom being an interventionist to help support all the kids in the class. We, it's still kinda new, but we believe additional support in the classroom is gonna be very helpful to make sure all of our kids are learning and have access to opportunities. It's a really interesting model. We, the grant covers for math, English, and science. And we were able to find funds for history, world language, and our health assisting. So all of our ninth graders are, have two staff members in the classroom.
Are there any other questions? If not, again, thank you for your presentation and we look forward to taking action on this at our next meeting.
Appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now go back to public comment.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered this time but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matter are not answered this time but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. The meeting will feature two public comment periods with the first comment period limited to one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up for virtual testimony. After one hour, anyone who hasn't testified will have the opportunity to, to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 42 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak and I would remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please note, the comments of any public speaker do not represent the Boston Public Schools or the Boston School Committee. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. We will, we will begin this evening with our in-person speakers. We'll begin with Jean McQuire, Melissa Diaz, John Mudd, and Victoria Garcia. Ms. McQuire?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to be on this side of the table. I'm gonna read the statement because that way I can cover it in time. It's about Franklin Park and your role in it. Franklin Park is our park, citizens of Boston. It is the people's park. When City Hall gave up on Franklin Park, we spent years cleaning it up. But now that there's money be made here, our community is being told to accept changes that we didn't ask for and we don't want. The fact is, we were never asked if we wanted a professional sports and entertainment complex in our park. We were never given the real option to fix White Stadium as a public stadium. This would never happen on the Boston Common. It absolutely shouldn't happen in the environmental justice communities around Franklin Park. Environmental justice protections, public land protections, and historical protections are enshrined in our public laws for a reason. To protect our public spaces from exactly this type of privatization scheme that might look nice on the short term, but is ultimately robbing the public of what is rightfully ours. Our public land is precious and it needs to be protected for future generations. If this proposal was really about helping Boston's students, the proponents should donate their money to charity or to partner with the city to invest in a public stadium.
30 seconds.
Stadium with no strings attached. It's not about helping kids, it's about making a profit. A public park is not meant for profit, it is meant for the public. We need our state leaders and you to step up and protect this public treasure, Franklin Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any questions? Any comments? Have you been there?
Yes, it's public comment, we can't comment.
All right, good, thank you. That's an improvement.
Next speaker is Melissa Diaz.
Hi, my name is Melissa Diaz and I'm here with my two brothers. And I currently attend the Margarita Muniz Academy. And we were at BPS One Point and we live near the White Stadium. And we want to share why we need a new athletic center.
Hi, I'm Christian and I have, I have fun track. I ran track at the White Stadium and I'm excited to be able to walk over and enjoy a new track in a gym center.
We were here to share voices of BPS students that deserve the best faculties to enjoy. We'd love to go on walks around the White Stadium with our family and parents and friends. That's hopefully, you know, we hope that you guys could vote to move this forward. We need this as soon as possible and thank you so much for your time. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna let you know, we're not ignoring you and, and we, it's not that we don't want to respond to you, but the way public comment works, it's just that it's not a discussion, it's public comment. You get to speak, we get to listen. We don't get a chance to have a dialogue with you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is John Mudd.
Good evening. My name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge and a longtime education advocate in Boston. BPS has proposed sending the vast majority of multilingual learners into general education classes with ESL support under its inclusion plan. The school committee and the district say they are evidence-based and data-driven. Fortunately, there's data on the outcomes of students under this approach since BPS already has assigned 40% of low English language development students into these Gen Ed with ESL classes. The school committee should insist that the district report on the outcomes of these students on the 2024 English Language Access Tests and on the 2024 MCAS pass fail rates before authorizing BPS to proceed with a further implementation of the inclusion plan for multilingual learners. The school committee should ask to see specific data on the following items. One, the 2024 access test results for the percent of students meeting progress in learning English targets for all students and for each grade level compared to earlier years with one year and three year trends, as was included in BPS's October report last year. Secondly, the student outcomes on achievement percentages in meeting and exceeding expectations for multilingual learner ELD 1 to 3 students in Gen Ed with ESL on the 2024 MCAS tests by grade level. And you should note the pass and failing rates. Last year, the report only included the scaled scores and you should insist on the pass fail rates. I've included specific language that you could request to ensure that this data is available before you proceed further in implementation. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Victoria Garcia.
Good evening. My name's Victoria Garcia and I am a community advocate representing Socia Latina, an out-of-school-time youth development organization located in Roxbury as their health and wellness manager. I'm also a longtime Dorchester resident and a parent of a Boston Public School student. In my role, oh, sorry. In my role, I have witnessed the stressors that young people are facing today from living a big part of their life online. And whether they made the choice to participate in it or not, young people have openly shared the difficulty they're having separating from their phones and social media. They have also shared the hurts and the harms that they've experienced online from unhealthy social comparisons, as well as racism and cyberbullying attacks, as well as the decline in their own or their friend's mental health. We also see how the lack of sleep from nighttime cell phone use is hurting young people, including decreased academic success and signs of suffering from depression. And now we support BPS on the no cellphone policy during the school day, but must share that this is not enough. Youth surveyed at Socia Latina share that although they're aware of the school's cellphone policy, there is inconsistency in the policy's implementation, which is the accountability part. So how are we holding all stakeholders accountable to adhere to the policy across the board? BPS should not solely be responsible for educating youth on how to use tech responsibly. Parents and guardians should also benefit from this, could also benefit from this education. And as a parent myself, I strongly suggest we look at our own tech use and role model what a healthy relationship with tech looks like for our kids. I also encourage families as much as possible to hold off on getting phones until later in their teenage years. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next speakers are Maria Jimenez, Sean Nayan, Deidre Manning, Tony Holiday, and Avery Farmer. Maria Jimenez, we'll need Spanish support.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Maria Jimenez. Estoy aquí para hablarles de la renovación del Estadio Blanco.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Jimenez. I am here to talk about the renovation of the White Stadium.
Soy madre de dos hijos que asistieron a las escuelas públicas de Boston.
I'm a mother of two kids, two children that went to Boston Public Schools.
Lamentablemente, en esos tiempos tuvimos que mover a nuestros hijos a otras escuelas porque en ese tiempo no nos ofrecían los recursos necesarios.
Unfortunately, during that period of time, we have to transfer and move those kids to a different schools because resources were not sufficient, were not provided as sufficient for our kids.
Además, vivimos a diez minutos de Franklin Park donde va a ser la renovación del estadio.
We also were living or leave 10 minutes away from Franklin, from Franklin Park, where the renovations of the stadium will take place.
Creímos profundamente que la transformación de este estadio ayudaría a nuestras familias y a nuestros hijos, y no solo a ellos, sino también a la comunidad porque nuestros pequeños negocios se beneficiarían también de ello.
We firmly believe that the renovation of the stadium will significantly help the families and the kids and the small businesses that we'll provide will get great benefit from that renovation I'm referring to.
Yeah, y no solo eso. Nuestros estudiantes y nuestra juventud tendría la oportunidad de practicar y asistir libremente a este estadio. En vez de utilizar su tiempo en algo que no le serviría, estarían haciendo deportes y estarían ocupando su mente en algo.
Also, the students and the youth, I have to point out that they'll be able to use their time wisely, not doing different things or getting in trouble. They'll be, they'll be able to benefit themselves by using this time, by using this space.
Creo firmemente y profundamente que este proyecto beneficiaría a todos.
I firmly believe that this particular project will be a benefit for everybody. I believe that.
Especialmente a los pequeños negocios y a nuestra juventud.
Particularly small businesses and our youth.
Estaría muy feliz si mis hijos hubieran tenido la oportunidad que están ofreciendo ahora de renovar este estadio porque caminarían sin problemas y yo estaría feliz de que lo hagan, pero...
I would be very happy if they would have benefited from this renovation, my kids, that they will be able to walk around there, but unfortunately...
En ese tiempo no pudo hacerlo, pero ahora tenemos la oportunidad que otras familias puedan lograr ese beneficio.
Unfortunately, at that particular time, they did not have the benefit to use the space, but other families would now have the privilege of using the space.
Muchas gracias, señora Jimenez. Se ha acabado el tiempo.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Sean Nayan. Thank you, Juan.
Good evening. Can you hear me? My name's Sean Nayan. I'm a BPS teacher and I also coach track and cross country at Boston Latin School. I'm also gonna read a text from the head coach who is not here today because he is at a meet, our first cross country meet. I also have three students that are BPS students, grew up in Boston Public Schools, were from Charlestown. I'll go ahead and read the text. This is about White Stadium and our vital need for our students. Our students deserve a world-class facility, all students in Boston Public Schools. This will be a great opportunity for them and I'll read the text. This is from Coach Chris Blondin. The main talking point is how the team lacks facilities and is constantly battling for the very little space we have. We practice often over at a two-lane track over Clemente School, Clemente Track, which is a, a college track. The school needs a dedicated space. The school needs a dedicated space, as all students need, so they can safely practice and compete and enjoy track, which is a very popular sport in the district. We have middle school track. I have kids from the Condon that I taught at that did the middle school track program. My kids competed in Junior Olympics. We did races in Franklin Park. And I just see that this place is the epicenter, and it is the right time and the right place for this kind of opportunity. Furthermore, being able to get a world-class facility will help athletes to be able to compete with suburban schools that seem to have everything, and get collegiate recruiting opportunities where the city schools are often overlooked, and be able to host meets, something BLS has never done, the oldest school in America. Updating the facilities will create an equal-playing environment with the suburban schools that the city kids have never had.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very much. Next speaker is Deirdre Manning.
Good evening. My name is Deirdre Manning. I'm a Dorchester resident and mother of two public school students. Want to refer people to the last meeting recording at the 1 hour and 34-minute mark for my concerns about the makeup of the school task force in the sense that there were no representatives for the interests of non-Titel 1 schools, charter schools, parochial schools, et cetera. I wanted to share with you an anticipated timeline for the admissions process for this coming year, absent any substantive changes to the exam school policy. In September, BPS students will take MAP testing, giving them extra practice over non-BPS students. Parents listening to Zoom presentations in October, November will be told that tiers will be determined in late fall. Some parents who live in tiers seven and eight will decide not to apply as their son or daughter's choices for admission are so low or even mathematically impossible. December 2nd through 13th, BPS students will take MAP testing for the second time. They will do ELA on one day and math on another, with their peers in their classroom and with their own teacher. On Saturday, December 7th, non-BPS students will be required to take both MAP sections back-to-back without their peers in a non-familiar location and with an unfamiliar test administrator. The dynamic nature of the test is challenging for students who can become anxious when the questions become increasingly more difficult until a certain number are answered incorrectly, and then the level of difficulty is lowered. December 12th-
Thirty seconds.
December 12th, five-year data release of the American Community Survey, which unfortunately only surveys 2.5% of the population. That means that the responses of five people in a neighborhood of 200 will dictate which tier a neighborhood will be in. On January 2nd, MAP testing results will be provided to families. On January 7th, tier maps will be updated using that ACS survey data. Families in wonderfully diverse Dorchester neighborhoods may inexplicably find themselves-
Thank you. Your time is up.
Excuse me one minute.
Thank you, Ms. Manning.
A higher tier where the majority of applicants-
Thank you. Your time is up.
Yes, I hear you. Will be denied a seat. I will finish this at the-
Next speaker is Tony Holliday.
Evening. Could y'all hear me? Okay, good. My name is Antonio Holliday. I am the Brighton High Head Track and Field Coach. I'm also an assistant coach on the football team. My track team consists of about four different schools: Brighton, Boston Green Academy, Mary Lyons School, and for a time, Desai Quincy, but now we're just down to Brighton High. I'm here to talk about mainly what my athletes from multiple schools would like to see from the White Stadium renovations. I have one of the only wheelchair athletes in the state. He's a national champion in indoor and outdoor track. He is one of the best athletes I've ever coached, but he has an insufficient track to compete on. Now he's a senior year, and he has been competing on the White Stadium track for four years and been dodging potholes every single year. And that is a health risk, and it's also a risk for other student athletes from Boston Public Schools to be on that track and jump on those pits. This renovation will change that and make it so then we could compete with other teams in Massachusetts and around the nation. One thing that we need to understand is it will be for the community, and understand that for the community. And we, as coaches and as people in Boston Public Schools, need to understand that we are here for the kids, and our thoughts and our opinions are for the betterment of the kids and athletes in Boston Public Schools.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. One thing that we need to understand altogether is that this is a positive thing for the entire city of Boston, for the entire city, and we need to understand that moving on, that track and field is going to be a big part of this city, and it's going to be a great thing to put kids in collegiate programs all around the nation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Avery Farmer.
Good evening. I'm Avery Farmer. I'm a fellow at Citizens for Juvenile Justice. I'm here to speak about the proposed BPS/ BPD information sharing policy on the agenda tonight. We have a letter that goes into this all in more detail than I can in two minutes. We've got copies of it. If any of you haven't received it, just catch my eye. So we and the community advocate organizations that we work with all believe in the need for safe schools and the information sharing policies that are necessary to make those happen. At the same time, it's important that those policies protect student information, sensitive information, from improper sharing and also conform to state and local law. Our position and our concern is that the policy up for approval tonight is inconsistent, in particular with the 2021 Boston ordinance. We're concerned that it raises legal issues that could subject BPS and BPD to litigation if it were to be approved tonight. And I'll just tell you quickly about that policy. So first of all, it applies to all Boston school safety officers, whether or not they're BPD, BPS, anyone who's in schools and the safety officer capacity is covered. It limits when those officers may create reports to four situations: serious bodily harm inflicted by a student, serious credible threat to school safety, and then a student in possession of a gun or a certain controlled substances. Outside of that, school safety officers may not create reports. And it also limits-
Thirty seconds.
It also limits when they may share those reports with BPD, specifically to situations when an emergency is ongoing or when state or federal law requires it. Outside of that, BPS officers may not share student information with BPD through this reporting system. So we feel that community partners were not included in this conversation, and if we're not able to resolve this sort of before the policy is passed, then litigation ends up being the only option.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is, the next speakers are Michelle Carroll, Karen Moni Brodek, C. Caliga, and Matt Krager. Michelle Carroll.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Carroll, and I'm a middle school science teacher at Charlestown High School. CHS is an open enrollment high school where 45% of our students are multilingual learners and 32% of our students have learning disabilities. As a science teacher, my content asks students to observe the world around them, ask questions, and think creatively. As I truly believe that all students can think and learn, science is a naturally accessible space. However, it would be a disservice to students and educators alike to describe learning in such a simplistic or linear manner. Let me paint a picture of a typical day in my classroom, a beautiful image of organized chaos. Students are doing a lab, and bodies are moving everywhere. Two students have an accommodation for a scribe to write for them because of a communication challenge. Another is currently a non-reader and is struggling to read the procedure. Three other students have IEP goals around emotional regulation and need support to work safely and productively with their peers. Several others struggle with processing and need tasks to be chunked, and an educator to check in frequently with them to ensure they are on task. And I run around trying to be in multiple places at the same time. Behind the on-ramp to grade-level curriculum is a hard-working educator going above and beyond to provide support and modify learning materials for each and every learner in their space. Fortunately for my students, CHS is filled with the most loving, caring, and hard-working educators and administrators. CHS is like a hug of a school. It's a community that collaborates, vulnerably problem-solves, and puts it all on the line to show up for kids every day. However, in spite of all of this, we still fall short-
Thirty seconds.
-because at the end of the day, even the most talented duly-licensed educator is still just one person being asked to do multiple jobs at one time. IEPs mandate that our students with disabilities are receiving specialized instruction, but what constitutes a minute of specialized instruction? And if it's specialized, how can I do it at the same time as I'm teaching the whole group? How can one person teach eighth-grade algebra and meet an IEP goal of counting to 100 at the same time? This one license model is leaving educators to choose who receives specialized instruction.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Your time is up.
Help us end the one license model in BPS.
Next speaker is Karen Moni Brodek.
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to hear me speak. My name is Karen Moni Brodek. I'm the Executive Director, President of the Emerald Necklace Conservancy, a nonprofit that works with myriad of public partners, community members, and others to support the Emerald Necklace parks, including Franklin Park. I'm also a student of the Atlanta Public School System. I have tremendous respect for everything I know you and we all struggle with every day to provide amazing public facilities to everyone that needs them. And I really appreciate your commitment to that, and that's precisely why we're here. The Emerald Necklace Conservancy has been working with a group of amazing community members, including Dr. G. McGuire, and to support essentially a fully-public renovation of White Stadium. It is clear from what we've heard today and before, the stadium needs work, and that's why it's so exciting that your capital budget includes $50 million to renovate it. And we did provide a letter, I hope many of you got to see it, where we showed a whole set of amazing public renovations of other stadiums that were able to be done for well under $50 million. It's definitely an important stadium that needs a tremendous amount of work. But this renovation today that is being contemplated, which still has a lot of information outstanding, does not allow the Boston Public School football program to continue on that field during the regular season. It has a lot of limitations, many of which we don't fully know-
Thirty seconds.
-because we have not seen a lease and a variety of other things. As I think you've heard, there are considerable, there's considerable risk to the Boston Public Schools in approving this proposal because there is an outstanding legal case which would be in court in March of next year. This is not the right plan for the public and for the long-term sustainability of what we need to do for all of our public school students. The public was not given options, but I think we can work together and make an amazing public stadium with the funds that you have dedicated. Thank you.
Next speaker is C. Caliga.
My name is Caliga. I am a BPS parent, three grown and two in high schools right now. What I want to say is, everybody who is against a pro soccer team in White Stadium still wants White Stadium renovated. We can do it, as Karen said, for a lot less money, because we don't need a Jumbotron, we don't need a beer garden, we don't need luxury boxes and state-of-the-art offices. We need a new locker room, we need new stands, and we need new fields. And it's for, it's a trust for our BPS kids and for the community youth. They are going to take green space to do White Stadium. They're going to take 70 to 140 old-growth trees down. I don't care how many new trees they plant. We are in climate crisis. How can anybody support this insane plan? This is our tax money, and we can do better. We can renovate White Stadium for our children and for the community with less money, and with the community, we will still work with you to keep it going, to renovate it, and keep it going in the future for a lot less money. And BPS may be saddled, if that soccer team pulls out, with a big debt. So people need to think about that. You do not take green space from an urban environment. That is where people come to breathe, to exercise, to gather with family in Franklin Park, to commune with nature. This is not the time to be doing this. The generations of our children will suffer long after I'm gone, long after you are all gone, even you young people, if we do this. It's irreparable, the damage that will happen to the jewel of the Emerald Necklace.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next speaker is Matt Krager.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Matt Krager, proud BPS parent, happy to have served on task forces and working groups for the school committee. But here in my capacity as a staff attorney at the Mental Health Legal Advisors Committee as state agency dedicated to protecting and advancing the rights of those with mental health needs, we join Citizens for Juvenile Justice, the Boston Education Justice Alliance, and the Committee for Public Counsel Services in voicing our grave concern about this policy for information sharing between BPS and BPD involving student records. The danger here is that whatever this draft policy has done to address privacy concerns under state and federal law, it has missed the requirements that are present in a Boston city ordinance that limits what BPS safety and security staff can write and can share. It expands beyond the scope of that ordinance, and that same ordinance has a provision that allows those harmed by it to sue the city or to sue those, be it BPS or BPD, who then have the data or information. I would urge you to take the time to review this more deeply. We saw it because it had appeared at the last school committee meeting, but there's not been engagement with the public. There's not been engagement with the groups that sat down with the district to work this out, be it the educators from the BTU-
Thirty seconds.
-the students and the student immigrant movement, or the parents who've been concerned about this the whole time. We urge you to take the time to get this right, because getting this wrong has grave consequences, particularly for our students. The reason I'm testifying is because I was part of the legal team that sued the district when a report of an unsuccessful school fight led to the deportation of a BPS student from East Boston High School. We don't need to see this sort of thing happen again, and we need to get our paper right-
Thank you, Mr. Krager.
-so we get it right in practice. Thank you.
We will now transition to virtual testimonies. Please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment, and be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. Our next speakers are Samira Mendez, Pete Franholz, Steve Vatonas, and Seth Davis. Samira. Samira Mendez and Pete Franholz are not in the meeting. Steve Vatonas? Please unmute yourself and turn on your camera. We can't hear you.
My name is Steve Vatonas. I'm the Managing Director of USA Track and Field in New England Association, which is headquartered in Brighton. I've also been an athletics official at Boston Public Schools track and field meets for over 20 years, indoors and outdoors, and have worked with a number of youth track and field programs through the city in that time. I'm speaking in support of the White Stadium reconstruction project. It will provide a new facility for student athletes and youth in general with a high-quality site for practicing competition, one which hasn't existed in the city for many, many years. The proposed plan will offer increased usage time for BPS and the community in general for youth practice and for other sports. It will also provide more opportunities for BPS student athletes to excel at the city, state, and national level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seth Davis, Fran Harrington, Ted Lasca, Pierre-Paul LaBosier, and Cleo Woodcock are not in the meeting. Jean-Luis Hatim? Oh, you're in person?
I am.
Okay. You can go ahead.
Hello. My name's Ted Lasca, and I've been Boston Public School track coach since the late '80s, high school since the mid-'90s. I've taken kids over to White Stadium. We're now like 40 years old, which is kind of weird. The stadium has been substandard for pretty much ever. We could spend the rest of my life lining out all the things that are wrong. But right now, you guys are getting ready to talk about negotiating the deal with the people from the professional soccer and building the whole thing. What's really important is that you make the negotiations public. They need to be transparent. They need to be registered. They need to be something that we can come back and see. Because the thing is, everybody here, this is a 30-year lease they're talking about. Everybody here will be gone when that lease is over. And what happens in Boston is that about 10, 15 years in, all the people that negotiated it no longer exist, and everybody just kind of ignores what happened. And we go back to not such a great situation. And if you don't, you know, if you want an example, then what happened to TD Garden is a great example of negotiating something for the community. And then, when everybody's gone, everybody just forgets it. So it's really important that whatever was negotiated, and I like what the people have--
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I like what they've decided to do. I like the access. I like the plan. I like everything. But once it's negotiated, it has to be something that's enforceable and something that we can see. And something 20 years from now, if somebody decides to change it, they can't. That's what I came to say. Anyway, it's a great project. I want it to happen.
Thank you very much. The next group of speakers, sorry.
I'm Seth Davis.
Oh, okay.
My name is Seth Davis. I live in Jamaica Plain. I am a BPS parent of three daughters, two of whom play soccer. And I'm a direct abutter, directly across the street from White Stadium. I'm very excited about this project and the potential of the proposed partnership to transform White Stadium into something that both the BPS community and the city of Boston can be proud of and excited to visit and use. My neighbors and I have concerns about how crowds will be managed for the professional soccer games and the long-term operation of the improved stadium for both day-to-day and other large events that we assume are going to be there. But so far, Boston Unity Partners and the city have been incredibly responsive and willing to work with my neighborhood, my neighbors, myself, across multiple public meetings in living rooms and at the stadium itself. This has been about addressing concerns we have around traffic noise and crowd management because there is going to be an impact to abutters if this project goes forward. I hope that this project is fully approved and moves forward. And I urge BPS to do this in a way that ensures accountability on the part of the professional soccer team to both BPS and to the communities impacted because these games will have an impact on us. But we're really excited to see what it brings to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will continue with Zoom. Next speaker, the next group of speakers are Jean-Louis Hatim, Mike Heischman, Cheryl Buckman, and Jenny Jacobs. Jean-Louis Hatim.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Excellent. Good evening. My name is Hatim Jean-Louis. I was born in 1978 in Roxbury, Massachusetts. Since 2015, I have served as the citywide head coach of the Boys and Girls Cross-Country Program. Over the years, I've had the privilege of knowing Ted Lasca and Steve Vitonas, Sherman Hart, Tony DeRocha. I have the privilege of taking our citywide league from dead last to top 25. In 2022, I was honored Coach of the Year, Division III Girls of Boston Land Academy. Ironically, since 2018, I've been the voice of Scholastic Track and Field in the Reggie Lewis. And as recently, I've done the Boston Marathon as well as New Balance National. I am behind the doors of the vision of what White Stadium is. I am part of that process. So I want to say the stadium holds a very, very special place in my heart and the student athletes that I serve. This investment will empower our athletes. It will empower our community. It will bring a world-class event to our doorstep because we've done this already. It's called the Boston Marathon. The next step to make Boston a world premier--
Thirty seconds.
--is White Stadium. And I, as a student and a stewardess, as a coach, in the relationship we've built with the mayor and the soccer team, I will fulfill that promise. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mike Heischman.
Mike Heischman, Dorchester Beja. The evaluation of Ms. Skipper once again demonstrates that the school committee sees the Boston Public Schools differently than the public. Except for the critical evaluation by Mr. Cadet Hernandez, every other member judged her with mostly positives and labeled her performance as proficient and thus deserving of a big pay raise. Beja this summer sent out a survey of the superintendents. Our collective judgment is that Ms. Skipper has failed our children, their caregivers, and the residents of Boston. When I was younger, I enjoyed a TV program called Hogan's Heroes, a major character with Sajin Schultz. When confronted with unpleasantness, his frameless refrain was, "I see nothing. I hear nothing." And I would add, "He would do nothing." That's the mantra of our unelected school committee. At every regular meeting after the superintendent's report, Chair Robertson reminds you to keep your comments and questions to the report. You loyally comply and limit what you could see, hear, and do. Your primary job that you have been appointed is not to honestly serve our children, their caregivers, and the community. It is to protect the reputations of the mayor and superintendent and protect the toxic, corrupt racist in an ineffective system. Some specifics before I run out of time. Ms. Skipper has aggressively increased racism and inequities. The school committee sees nothing, hears nothing, and does not--
Thirty seconds.
Right from the beginning of her misleadership, she fired Black and Brown central office workers and replaced them with those loyal to her. You see nothing, hear nothing, and do nothing. Dr. Charles Grandson, the chief equity officer, wrote her a letter expressing concern about the mistreatment of Black and Brown central office. She fired him. You see nothing, hear nothing, and do nothing. I have many more examples and end with, "You've judged the superintendent's performance to be--
Thank you very much, Mr. Heischman. Next speaker, next speaker is Cheryl Buckman.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a BPS parent to a sixth grader at the Deverin Dorchester, member of FAMCOZA, longtime resident of South Boston. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our transportation. On the first day of school, my son's bus never arrived to pick him up for an exciting day of sixth grade. I had the Boston Globe here to shadow this new and exciting adventure, to see how this app worked. Soon, my son's excitement turned into disappointment. As time went on, and soon his bus went from sitting two streets over for 10 minutes to going by us on the main street, missing him altogether. I will quote in his words, "I am tired of this, and it's okay. I'll just go in tardy." Not acceptable words I want to hear for my special-needs son on what is supposed to be his first day back at school. Seeing the sadness in his eyes, this epic failure wasn't going to darken his day. I got him there with the help of a neighbor. He was 25 minutes late. I had also spoke to transportation to inform them of this, as he was labeled as a no-show, when in reality, the bus never arrived. And the agent that I had spoke to offered her sincere apology that my child never got his bus. As quoted in the Boston Globe, "On the first two days of school,
thirty seconds.
one-third of students got their bus. My child fell into this category. As we know and imagine, other families are going through the same thing or far worse. This is unacceptable in any means. We all know this is a fixable issue. I hope that BPS does its best to fix this before we end up in a downward spiral." Something we all know, a single-- It takes a single--
Thank you, Ms. Buckman. Your time is up. Next speaker is Jenny Jacobs.
Hello?
Hello?
Hear me?
Yeah, you can start.
My name's Jenny Jacobs. I teach English at English High School, and I'm a parent of two BPS students. And I live in Jamaica Plain. And I'll just start my statement now. I teach ESL I and Native Spanish Literacy to newcomer immigrant students at English High School. And I want to emphasize the importance of inclusion done right for adolescent multilingual learners. Inclusion at high school, for high school multilingual learners is really unique and different than it is at the elementary years. Our concern at English High School is that the current inclusion model, which has pushed multilingual learners at ELD Level 3 into general education classes, known as the DESI-SEI model, is being rushed without time for thoughtful implementation. So I just want to be clear, we do not support segregating multilingual learners or preventing their advancement. But we do need to provide school-level teams more flexibility, clear guidance, and support that draws on students, families, teachers, and school leaders to craft the unique course load that allows each student to be successful. Last winter, my colleagues and I conducted a focus group with eight of our third-year multilingual learners, and they had begun to transition into general education classes. We were able to have the students attend both a mix of BPS SEI classes and DESI-SEI classes.
Thirty seconds.
These students, thank you, strongly opposed the new inclusion model for multilingual learners. They really emphasized the threat to social, emotional well-being, the challenges for academic, learning academics while also learning English in a short period of time, and the inequities of access to learning opportunities. So we just have three basic suggestions. Recruit more bilingual content area academic teachers at the high school level. Provide more bilingual resources, like bilingual dictionaries.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Reduce class sizes. Adopt a co-teaching model. And hire bilingual parents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next group of speakers are Reverend Minyard Culpepper, Fred Vetterline, Brad Mahoney, Sarah Freeman, and Alan Lipkin. Mr. Culpepper?
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to testify tonight. I agree with Jean McGuire that Franklin Park is our park. I believe that this proposal is also about the future generation. I was born in Boston, attended Boston English High School, grew up playing in White Stadium. Lived across the street. My grandfather and grandmother live on Seaver Street, directly across the street from Franklin Park. Every morning I get up, I see the camels every morning. So I see the beauty of Franklin Park. But I also see the significance of this investment by the Boston Unity Soccer Partners into our community. We would love to have this new soccer stadium, not just for the track, but for the football and everything else that goes with it. For me, one of the biggest components of this that has really attracted me is the community benefits. I believe that the benefits of this investment going into the community will benefit all of the community, not just sports-wise, but also financially. Our community needs financial investment right now, and this soccer team is exactly what I think will bring excitement, newness, revival, regeneration to Franklin Park and to the communities surrounding Franklin Park. I am 100% in support of the stadium, of the soccer team, and of the expansion of Franklin Park. Thank you for giving me time to talk tonight, Reverend Minyard Culpepper.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Fred Vetterline.
Hello.
Could you please turn on your camera?
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to follow on Reverend Culpepper's remarks. For two, I'd like to talk both about the school, the benefit to the children, and to the park itself. The children, this new plan extends operations seven days a week. It goes from 8 o'clock till 10 o'clock PM, except for the days of professional soccer. It gives a new track, which is world-class. Eight lanes. Track and field will become enabled in a way it hasn't been in years. And what it does is becomes also, the athletes become mentors for children because just having them there and their involvement, some members will certainly become involved with the community. And not just in soccer, also track because of the improvements there. And so the people that are against this, most of them, they don't speak about the children. You don't hear that. So another thing about, I'd like to talk about the design. I spent two years cleaning up the entrance to Williams Gate with my neighbors, 32 meetings. That was 10 years ago. And the park has just improved since there. This new design also creates a grove. It's a wonderful design, fitting Homestead's principles. It includes a grove where there can be concessions. And there used to be a refractory--
Thirty seconds.
--in Franklin Park, where people could work and provide refreshments. And what this is, is it becomes a destination, just the way the zoo's a destination, the golf club's a destination. And there's still the wilderness. There's still all that forest for people to enjoy nature. So I see this as just adding another element to the park to make it wonderful. And I'm fully in support of the White Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brad Mahoney and Sarah Freeman are not in the meeting. Next speaker is Alan Lipkin. Alan Lipkin, please accept the prompt.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Alan Lipkin. I'm an attorney, and I represent Jean McGuire, other individuals who live in the area of Franklin Park, as well as Emerald Necklace Conservancy in the litigation seeking to oppose the White Fund Stadium. It violates Article 97 of the state constitution by privatizing public land as well as the terms of the George Robert White Fund Trust, which is supposed to be for public benefit. The court did in March deny my client's request for a preliminary injunction seeking to halt this project until there could be a trial on the merits or a summary judgment decision after discovery, where a court will hopefully make a decision after receiving all the facts and the law. The court can still make that decision and hold that this project is being pursued in violation of Article 97. In my view, if the city goes forward or the school department goes forward with this lease, you're taking a tremendous risk going down this path that a court is going to rule that this project is in violation of Article 97 or the underlying trust. You could end up with a half-done stadium or trying to unwind this deal. The soccer investors can go on to another venue, form another entity, and pursue whatever they're trying to pursue here in another location. We are now proceeding with discovery. We're gathering our facts. And in my view, there's a very strong possibility that we're going to prevail and that this project-- and that this project is going to be found in violation of Article 97. You're taking a tremendous risk. The city's 2023 to 2029 Open Space Plan shows that this is protected Article 97 property, uh, as have all the, um, Open Space Plans since 2002 for 24 years. We urge you not to proceed with this. You're taking too big a risk. The court could rule in my client's favor and hold that this project violates Article 97 and the underlying trust. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Chair, that concludes our first hour of testimony. The remaining speakers will have an opportunity to testify at the end of the meeting.
Great.
Thank you. Um, we're just going to take a five-minute recess, um, before we do come back to do our, the rest of our business. Thank you.
Stretch.
Okay, five minutes. Just wanted to let you all know that we are going to table, um, our first action item tonight. Oops, sorry. And we're going to table the first action item tonight, which was the policy revision recommendation for the student information policy until the next, um, meeting to ensure that we've addressed the concerns that we just heard tonight. So we're going to, um, hold on the policy. So our, um, action item, our first action item this evening is the policy revision recommendations for the school naming process. I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Our wonderful, thank you, Chair. Uh, just as a reminder, the school naming policy, this was passed by the school committee in 1998. Uh, the naming policy needs to be updated so that it aligns with the City of Boston's updated building naming policy. Our proposed revisions also clarify the community engagement process and delineate naming decisions that require a school committee vote and decisions that can be approved by the superintendent. Uh, Dr. DePina is also here tonight to answer any questions, and with that, Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? No? Okay. Thank you. Um, so if there's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the policy revision recommendations for the school naming process as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Was there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Alkins, Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. Neil, Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Our last action item this evening is the White Stadium renovation and lease authorization. Now I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Our wonderful Chair, thank you. Um, so last week, the city's chief of operations, Dion Irish, who I see here, and BPS senior director of athletics, Avery Esdale, provided an update on the proposed renovation of White Stadium and asked the school committee to grant me, as the superintendent, the authorization to enter into a lease agreement with partner Boston Unity Soccer. Tonight, we ask for you to take your vote. The finalization of the lease agreement will allow the city's Public Facilities Department to move forward with demolition, a part of the existing stadium, this fall. White Stadium, as we all know, has been in disrepair for far too long. The renovation plans include new community space, strength training, locker rooms, and physical therapy spaces. Our student athletes deserve to have access to a modern, multi-service facility and the resources to support them. White Stadium is a key part of the city's efforts to improve access to athletics for all BPS students. Mike Firestone, the mayor's chief of policy and strategic planning, is here, as is Avery Esdale, who is our senior director of BPS Athletics, uh, and they're here to answer any follow-up questions. With that, Chief, uh, Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns? Anyone? All right.
I guess it's just worth saying, one, I think this is incredibly exciting, and I'm sort of heartened to the, what you shared with me, just around your experience with, with the stadium. Um, and then, you know, we don't play a role besides this moment where we're like, you know, off, the authorization goes forward, but it will be exciting to just continue the updates for us around how you're working hard to make sure BPS students have access to the stadium and are able to use it, and that the agreement is, is good for everyone involved.
Yes. Thank you. No? Okay. All right. If there's nothing further, I will now entertain a motion to approve the White Stadium renovation and lease authorization as presented. Is there a motion?
Some will-
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing, um, excuse me. Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins, Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. Neil, Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Great. Thank you all, and now we will now return to public comment. Ms. Parvex?
Thank you. Um, the next group of speakers is our Shingao He, Agnes Hu, Lin Q, Christine Ma, and Wan Ha Shen. They all need, um, support with Cantonese. Terry, can you please support us? Shingao He is not in the meeting. Agnes? Agnes is, um... Please join, please accept the prompt, Agnes.
Oh, hi. Um, my name is Agnes Ho, and I'm a BPS parent and a school side counselor at Josiah Quincy Elementary School. I wanted to express that I fully support the SEI program. It's, um... It's because the program is very important to our Chinese families and children, especially for new immigrants. They don't speak any English and really need the support of the SEI program. Children is our future and asset. We need the SEI program to support our children to learn and grow. Without the support, our children may feel scared, frustrated, and even depressed in school. Every child should have a happy childhood memory, not a nightmare. JQ Year is located in Chinatown, and Chinatown is a Chinese community. So I hope we can keep our traditional culture and hope that having this SEI program can benefit our community and other neighborhood. I hope we can maintain the SEI program and continue to be successful. So please don't take away our valuable resources. Please help our children to learn and grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lin and Christine are not in the meeting. Wan Ha Chen?
Wan Ha Chen, how many do I?
Could you please ask Wan Ha Chen to a- accept the prompt? It's not accepting the prompt, so I think we will continue with our next speaker.
Wan Ha Chen, if you don't accept, we'll continue with the next question.
Yes, so our next speaker is Greg Peterson. He's not in the meeting either. Rodney Singleton? He's not in the meeting either. Just a second. No. Next speaker is Rodney, Maite Peña. Maite Peña? You can start. We can't hear you. Yeah, Maite Peña, we can't hear you. Let's try with the next speaker, Joanne Matthews. Joanne Matthews? Joanne Matthews is not in the meeting. Charlene Situ is not in the meeting either. Quinn Lee? Quinn Lee? Please accept the prompt.
Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. So, good evening. I'm Quinn Lee. I'm a parent of two BPS students. I would like for you all to be aware of a serious violation of safety and compliance that happened in my child's school yesterday. This can happen to your children too if we don't do anything about it. Yesterday at 9:36 a.m., the school bus dropped my daughter off at school. At 2:00 p.m., we communicated with her teacher that we would come to pick up our daughter. Her teacher text back that my daughter did not come to school. It's been my three and a half years old when missing from her class for four and a half hours. Lady and gentlemen, each four and a half hour, my child went missing without anyone in school noticing, nobody. Luckily, the school personnel were able to find her, and that's what know when we were driving to the school in about 20 minutes. This unfortunate accident presents an urgent issue of safety and compliance at our child's school. We want you all to be aware of this. We want to be assured that this negligence to attendance policy is not acceptable and cannot happen again through our BPS system in any school to any kids, any families. BPS cannot set goal that achievable, not having. Makes ten. If the fundamental rights of children being safe in school be violated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Sky Ortiz. Sky Ortiz?
Hi. May I open the light? Sorry. How are you? Thank you. Just kind of start? It's good. Okay. Ready? Okay, so my name is Sky Ortiz. The reason for this public comment is for the intention of seeking a proper outlet of aid in due fact that the Boston School Committee is the BPS district repository. To begin, I want to stop by stating that according to Mass General Laws, Chapter 76 One, the Board of Education is designated to establish the minimum age requirement for school attendance, and in that for the past 123 years since 1901, via Supreme Judicial Court in Albert versus the inhabitants of Town of Chester, Citation 180 Mass. 2061 and E263, the September child of seven is the minimum age. With the above legality explained, I am now clear in stating that in May 2022, my three children, ages six, five, and three, all under the legal age required to attend school, were moved to identified separated foster homes for two kids for 13 months and one kid for 12 months for fault. If you want any filings for punctuality concerns as abuse neglect. The fact that these circumstances have been further extended is unfathomable but active. Today marks the 11th month for a BPS missing some public position due to a conflict of interest through ongoing vindictive communications in the Department of Children and Families about my three children's punctuality. Thereon too, without further providing exact details on this matter. Besides, in that I make this next statement, that's a direct result of such said actions have caused my three children to have been displaced again for the past seven weeks in foster homes, although for punctuality concerns through communication from BPS departments at summertime, during the summertime. I am therefore asking BPS to courteously, the Boston School Committee directly each of the members.
Thank you, Ms. Sky. Your time is up. Thank you. Our next, we are going now to public comments and reports. Next speaker is Jean McQuire. Okay. Karen Moni Brodek?
Could Rodney Singleton need to know?
No. Karen, you're not speaking?
Okay.
You signed up on public comment?
Great. Thank you. Hi, Karen Moni Brodek, president of the Emerald Necklace Conservancy. I do want to mention a couple of things that I think are involved in the risk that unfortunately I think that this plan is before you. People are asking, I think, really important questions about the terms of the lease and the agreement and the obligations. Right now, the way that we understand the lease, and again, none of us have seen the precise terms, the soccer investors, as was talked about last week, could leave after 10 years, and then there is essentially a $100 million or more stadium, which is now the maintenance obligation of the Boston Public Schools. So that is, you know, a significant concern that people have brought up. And the other major outstanding issue is that, as I noted in the letter that we sent, is that currently, the property on which the stadium sits is owned by the George Robert White Trust, according to the city's assessor database and other things. It's owned by the George Robert White Trust. It's actually not owned by the City of Boston School Department. The city believes that there is another interpretation, but that is, those are the facts. The city actually sold it to the George Robert White Trust for money, $20,000, a long time ago. Now, that area, including acres of land around the stadium, where 70 trees now sit that may be taken down, that area is not actually owned by the school department.
30 seconds.
So it is complex, to say the least, that, and this is why this matter is unfortunately in litigation, because the actual right of negotiating a lease when you don't actually own the property is problematic, to say the least. And so the challenge is that potentially, what would be happening is a stadium will be demolished this fall and not available for your students, actually, because of some of the legal questions here. And what instead, we would certainly like to see is a renovation with the existing funds. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Caliga. Is she going to speak?
No.
Okay, thank you. Alan Lipkin is not in the meeting. Greg Peterson is not in the meeting. Rodney Singleton? Please turn on your camera.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Rod Singleton. I've lived in Boston for now 63 years. I was born and raised in Roxbury. I am part of the Franklin Park Defenders lawsuit. I'm just old enough to remember busing and find it ironic that I'm addressing the school committee. I remember when busing was a big deal, and the reasons for busing had to do with separate inequality, separate inequality. We would never privatize the Boston Common or the public garden, yet these are more, these are whiter, more affluent neighborhoods of Boston. But we do this kind of privatization here in neighborhoods of color. This is a seminal busing moment, and, you know, I can only see, it's obvious, you didn't listen to all the testimony and you voted. So that means the cake was already baked. You knew what you were going to do. And, you know, I'll just leave by saying this. MLK once said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." And I pray to God justice catches up with you folks, because what you're doing is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is, we're going to try Maite Peña again.
Hello?
Hello. We can hear you now.
Hi, I'm sorry. You can hear me. So, hi, everyone. My name is Maite Peña. I am here, give me one second, I'm so sorry about that. Hello, Superintendent, School Committee. Thank you so much for the opportunity of letting me speak tonight. I am here to share my support with Up Academy and appreciate it for the partnership that I have with Boston Public Schools. I am a proud staff member for Up Academy Dorchester. I have two young ones that graduated from Up Academy Dorchester. My youngest one just graduated Fenway High School as the salutatorian for the school, and she is as a freshman year at Tufts University at the moment. My job at Up is an operations team. I lead the family engagement, the attendance team, and also the high school choice coordinator. I, this is a, I do this job for the wonderful students that we have at Up Academy Dorchester. I take my job very serious as doing this, because as myself, I didn't get to complete high school, as I didn't get the support that I had when I was in school. But with the opportunity and support that I get from Up Academy staff, I was able to complete my high school in 2020, and I am on my journey now with college and continue to take college classes. I have been working with Up Academy, one of the founders, since 2013, and I have been in the Marshall Building since, it's going to be 15 years now. I prioritize working as a family engagement because I love serving the community and being there for the families. My role allows me to work closely with families.
30 seconds.
Help the network of Up. And I know that Up, we also help succeed the success for our students. Thank you all so much for letting me speak today, and I appreciate the work that we do together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peña. Chair, that concludes the public testimony.
Right. Thank you. New business? Okay. That concludes our business for this evening. Our next hybrid school committee meeting will take place in person on Wednesday, September 25th, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Boling Building. Is there a motion?
Some more.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.